Good afternoon, I guess by now, and thank you all so much for waiting patiently and coming back. And again, thanks to all the students for attending this. And I guarantee that there'll be more inspiring words of wisdom from the two distinguished, you know, people that we have here. And I want to thank, you know, Sri Rabinjan Chatterjee and Sri Partho Chatterjee for both joining us to, for this event. Let me make brief introductions of the two, you know, two members of the government. Many of you probably know them better than I do, so I may not need much of introduction. Professor Rabinjan Chatterjee is now the Minister of Technical Education and Training. He is also the Minister of Science and Technology, Minister of Biotechnology for the Government of West Bengal. He is an MLA elected from the Bardhwan district. And he's, you know, been elected in the 2011 elections, which most of you know. He actually obtained his PhD from Bardhwan University, was the first student to obtain his PhD in Bardhwan University, and has been a professor of Bengali in Bardhwan University for many years. And we just learned that he has actually graduated 25 PhDs under his guidance. And I think that's, you know, something that tells for itself. So he knows what research is, may not be a computer scientist, but research is the same regardless of what subject that you work on. So it's my great pleasure to, you know, welcome Sri Rabinjan Chatterjee. Thank you, sir, for joining us, and here's a bouquet to welcome you. Of course, the next one I want to introduce is Sri Partho Chatterjee. He is the Minister in Charge for Commerce and Industries, Parliamentary Affairs, Industrial Reconstruction and Public Enterprises, and of course, Information Technology, which is very relevant for us of Government of West Bengal. He has a Bachelor's Degree with Honors in Economics and Postgraduate in Business Administration with Personalization and Personal Management. He's been in the public sector industry for a long time, was in the Andrew Yule and Company Limited. And recently, when the opportunity arose, he has come back and joined public service to be part of the West Bengal Government. We have already been chatting about his views and, you know, and his excitement, passion to drive West Bengal and Kolkata to new heights in terms of industry and research and so on. We've always viewed Bengal as one of the leading communities for science and intellectual affairs in India, and I think we'll see that revival. Thank you, sir, again for joining us, and we would like you to present this, I'd like to present this bouquet to you. And of course, I'd like to welcome again my own boss and the Worldwide Head of Microsoft Research, Dr. Rick Rashid, Chief Research Officer for Microsoft. I don't think I can do as, you know, exciting an introduction as Monajit, who's already done that, so I won't say much more. Please welcome Dr. Rick Rashid, and we'd like you to have a bouquet. And of course, I want to introduce a young researcher here, one who is very close to me and is, you know, helping me run the lab. He is the Assistant Managing Director for Microsoft Research. And in one of my slides, you saw some of his accomplishments, recently won the Computer Aided Verification Award together with another of our colleagues. And he is an eminent scientist himself, he may be young in age, but has already accomplished many things. He's from, you know, South India, did his PhD at University of California, Berkeley, and since then has been working in Microsoft Research. Joined us in 2005 when we set up the lab to lead in the area that now we call programming languages and tools. And I would say that he is an example for all you young students out there and what you want to be when you grow up. And we'd like to present you with the bouquet, Sri Ram. At this point, I'd like to invite Dr. Rick Rashid to make a few remarks about, you know, research and welcome the ministers, and then we'll ask the ministers to speak as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anandan. Yeah, I spoke earlier to... I think this is a recurring theme. Yeah, I spoke earlier today of the importance of basic research, and I think it's exciting that we have here representatives from the Bengali Government that really believe in this and believe in the importance of these ideas as well. You know, I think if you look at the, some of the important problems our society has to deal with, whether it be in education, whether it be in healthcare, in energy, in sustaining the planet, computer science research really has an opportunity to contribute tremendously to that. I mean, we're entering a period where there's a possibility for truly personalized medicine. And for example, within Microsoft Research, we've been doing research on developing an AIDS vaccine, on combating malaria, on finding new ways to tackle some of the difficult problems that we have in our healthcare systems. And also finding ways to change the way we manage and create energy and do education. So we think that's really an opportunity for the community and for all of us. And again, this event is really a celebration of the notion that basic research in computer science can have a tremendous impact on the world and the world around us. And again, my welcome to our distinguished hosts and guests, and thank you all for being here to participate in this.
Thank you, Rick. Now, I'd like to invite Professor Sri Rabinjan Chatterjee and, you know, come and tell us about his thoughts on science research, sir.
Honorable Minister, Mr. Partho Chatterjee, and distinguished scholars and personalities on the dais, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning, everybody. It is my pleasure to be here in this August gathering for Tech Vista, the Microsoft Research India's annual research symposium at Kolkata. We all know that it is the age of competition. New research and development, R and D, is the need of the hour. R and D is the investigative activities that a business chooses to conduct with the intention of making a discovery that can either lead to the development of new product or procedures, or to improve the existing products or procedures. It is one of the means by which business can experience future growth by developing new products or processes to improve and extend their operations. While R and D is often thought of as synonymous with high-tech farms that are on the cutting edge of new technology. May established consumer goods companies spend money on improving old products also. But it is a usual practice that, on an average, most of the companies spend only a small percentage of their revenue on R and D. If we look back to history, the Renaissance and the Industrial Revolution swept the continent of Europe from the 15th to the end of 18th century. This period is the perfect illustration of how innovative techno-management solutions can change the face of the society radically. While scientific discoveries and their applications in technology were at the roots of such revolutionary social changes brought about in only 300 years, one must not lose sight of the fact that there was a commitment, development of the management science, which paved the way for mass production and big industries, alloys, as well as for effective trade and distribution networks. Looking at the present-day scenario, however, one needs to pause to take a re-look at the contribution of technical and managerial developments to the social sector. For most of the countries of the world, especially the poor and developing countries, the impact of such development in the social sector is rather said and not specifically directed to ameliorating the lot of the poor. While technology and management have indeed contributed immensely towards developing the sectors like defense, communication, IT, mobile technology, advanced medical sciences, and the likes, it has not really focused its attention to the core social sectors which affect the lives of the billions of the earth. For example, food production, malnutrition, air mix, enough portable water, clean environment, to name only a few, have not received due attention. It is time we shift our focus and concentrate more on such vital issues that affect the social sector more intimately than the techno-management revolution, which has brought only cosmetic changes in the rural and poverty-stricken area of the world. In our country, innovative techno-management solutions are of immediate importance to meet the urgent needs of the social sector. The illiterate populace of the country from the rural and backward areas have found their place only in penurbles of modern developments that have taken place in India. Thus, 30 to 40% of our population suffer silently. Our state, West Bengal, is no exception to this. It is against the background that innovative solutions are urgently called for from the technologists and the management experts of the country in general and the state in particular. It is not the higher ends, but the lower ends of technology and management that cry for attention from the experts. There is no iota of doubt that the organization of Techno Vista could not have come at a more opportunist time. I thank the organizers, Microsoft Research, for taking all the pain to organize the conference. I wish all success of Tech Vista 2012. In fine, I can quote from Robinranath Tagore, the Nobel Laureate, the great Bengali poet. He says, "Where you are with the world, I am also with you." This will be the message of this time, and I think Microsoft will come to us and we'll go to Microsoft. In this way, the global friendship will develop, and the real globalization will take place. Tagore is the first modern Bengali man who says the term globalization. In this word, and I think Microsoft will extend its cooperation for research and development in our state also. And here is our IT Minister and Industry Minister. He'll take conscience on this fact that our young generations who are very much interested in IT, and they will come forward to take place in West Bengal for developing ways where our Chief Minister is very much eager to develop our state in modern ways. I come here in the morning to attend this function, and the young generation, I am looking them. I look forward for their bright future. And in fine, I quote again Robinranath Tagore, where he says, "The need of the state and the world, this is the tendency of our Bengali people. We like our state, and we like our country, and we like the people of the world." So this is the cry of the tide. Thank you all, thank you, young man.
Thank you, sir, for that inspiring speech, and I'm sure the audience, I can see from their reaction, and thank you very much. So it's my pleasure now to invite Sri Partho Chatterjee to come and share his views and remarks and inspire you again.
The dignitaries on the dais, honorable Minister Rabinjan Chatterjee, Dr. Rick Rashid, Dr. P. Anandan, and Sri Ram Rajamani. My young generations who are clapping and waiting for their career to grow in the research and development, to do a better life and, to have a better life and do good to the state and the nation, dignitaries sitting in front of me. Let me tell you that the subject on when Microsoft Indian head came to me, Vasukar Pramanik, and discuss about the business. And I'm not hiding anything today because the government under the leadership of Mr. Manthab Banashe wanted to have high-end jobs and to do research and development to our, in our state. And that is why we have spoken a lot with him and Mr. Anandan, that the kind of weightage given to the research and development is not at all encouraging to us. I just heard about the kind of students in the PhD compared to other states and in our states. It's also not encouraging. And since we are in the government, wanted, even wanted to have a separate research and development wing where Microsoft can be a part of us. So that we can have our young generations not only to do their PhD, but also to see that the industry is absorbing them. Unless we have, we have PhD with us, but in the industry, if someone gets PhD, he is not being chosen because of higher qualifications and not given the job, the kind of jobs they wanted to do. I am thankful to Tech Vista, taking the light throughout the country with the Microsoft. Since 2005, Microsoft Research India, based in Bangalore, has been engaged in cutting-edge basic and applied research, network systems, software engineering, machine learning, computer visions, graphics, visualizations, and the role of the technology in socio-economic development. In addition to developing and contributing key technologies to Microsoft products, Microsoft Research India collaborates with a wide range of scientific and academic institutions to advance the state of art in computing research in India. Technological progress is an important contributor to economic growth and plays a vital role in the advancement of modern economy. Research and innovations are essential for technological progress and the success of any nation. The successful countries in the world today are so because their focus is on research. The Indian industry also needs to be invested heavily in research to become the world leaders. In today's world, computer technology plays a great role in the economy, society, and global position of a country. Except a small number of companies, most Indian companies are consumers of technology development elsewhere and not pioneer of new technologies. Private-public partnership is an important way in which India can grow its research base. As I said, the government is, our government is open to the Microsoft and others who are engaged in research, work, PhD, preparing people for employable, for a high-end job in the industry. Is most welcome to have PPP model in our state, to do whatever they like, we can also join hands with you. There has been a plenty of grassroots levels innovation in the country. But India needs a consistent, coherent program across sectors to tap into these innovations. India should also recognize that the solution or technologies developed elsewhere may not be immediately applicable in developing economy like ours. So India will needs to own innovations. India has a long and had a strong workforce of skilled engineers, and this workforce is infamous. However, a very small fraction of this workforce goes on to take up the advanced studies and become innovators. Indian governments, academia, and Indian industry have to encourage more students to take up advanced studies and become innovators for the country's future. I only quote the percentage of shares in the global R and D spending. When US is all having 33.60 percentage, Japan 12.60 percentage, China 12.50 percentage. We are only 2.10 percentage. So this only speaks about that we need to have, we need to have more and more thrust on the area of research and development. In the West Bengal, is the land of Robinranath Tagore, and some of you clapping, probably Rabinjan Chatterjee might be speaking in Bengali. And if you go through the English version of the Tagore, you'll love to recite once again. Ishachandra Vidha Shagur, who are pioneers in education. West Bengal is the home of Acharya Jagodish Chandra Bose, Meghnath Shah, Shutrandhanath Bose, Acharya Prupullo Chandra Raya, stolwarts in the field of science. With the state government's vision to make West Bengal one of the top three IT states in the country and to capture 25% of India's IT revenue by 2015, West Bengal is on the path to becoming technology-driven economy in the coming years. Our IT department has received six major proposals of rupees 1,410 crores, creating an employment of direct employment of 1,9500 and generating indirect employment of 1 lakh 25,000. West Bengal is poised for a massive upturn in economic and social growth. For West Bengal to derive maximum growth-centric advantages focus is needed on research and innovation. Prestigious institutes of the country like I am Kolkata, I am Korakpur ISI Presidency College are in the West Bengal. Some of the premier research institutes in the states are the Shah Institute, Bose Institute, and the Indian Association for Cultivation and Science, and the Indian Institute of Chemical Biology, among others. West Bengal has a big talent pool, as I said in the other seminar, that we have a mismatched talent. We have 75% of our talents are mismatched. So in spite of having talent pool, state governments stress on human resource development will ensure continuous expansion of the manpower pool to meet the growing economy. We must also look to bring women into the research and skilled workforce and to encourage them look at research as a career. Research and innovation is needed to address the needs and desires of economically poor communities in sectors such as agriculture, healthcare, education, and microfinance. Before I conclude, I'm looking forward to Microsoft after having this kind of symposium to provide us the suggestions on which the Government of West Bengal certainly examine and implement on the basis of our understanding between the two. I have spoken to Microsoft when they have come to me, I have already spoken to Sam Pitrada and Narayan Murthyji on the same subject. I have also spoken to Cognizant when they wanted to have the second expansion. I have also spoken to Savit Vatia, who came here for a mobile technology. So there must be a research and development approach in our business. We are doing business, not giving appropriate weightage on the research and development. We may remain good today, we may remain better tomorrow, but we have to look beyond tomorrow to give more research and development jobs in our industry. And I am confident that the big industries whom I am talking to, they have also expressed the desire to accommodate a separate section of research and development being in near future. So you have a bright future, those who are attending, I convey to them, you have a bright future in West Bengal. We are giving more thrust on the research and development. We are thinking of having a separate setup under the WBIDC or Commerce Industry or IT so that a setup can be created where we can push the PhD people who are doing PhD on computer science and others, they should be given appropriate jobs and assignment, not only looking at the CTC, but there must be job satisfaction in the industry. Before I conclude, I only quote the Benjamin Franklin's quote, "An investment is a knowledge pays the best interest." Thank you.
Once again, thank you, thank you for more inspiring words, and I think by now you all got the message, what you're supposed to do, and they should do it. I'd like to invite Sri Ram now to make the closing remarks of this session.
Honorable Sri Rabinjan Chatterjee, Honorable Minister Sri Partho Chatterjee, on behalf of Microsoft Research India, it's a great privilege I have to thank you for taking time from your busy schedule to come to this event. As we heard earlier, Microsoft Research India has been organizing these events every year in a different part of the country. We have organized one in Delhi, we have organized one in Pune, we have organized one in Chennai, one in Bangalore, and now we have come to Kolkata, which is in some sense the intellectual capital of India. It has produced so many poets, scientists, and it's a great opportunity for us. It has produced so many poets, scientists and it's a great opportunity for us as a research organization to address all the young people in the audience and encourage them to take up research as a career. I also thank Dr. Rick Rashid and Dr. Anandan for setting up our lab in India and giving opportunity for so many youngsters like you to pursue research as a career. I encourage you to attend the remaining talks, be inspired by the distinguished scientists that are here and make full use of this opportunity. Thank you, everyone.